I never wrote my script. I don't, I don't know if we're ready.
Calling the Erie City Council meeting to order at seven thirty-seven P. M.
Roll call Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon. I have no idea if you're all here.
Just to let the public know, for a number of reasons, some of the council members are participating remotely tonight, but we had some technical issues before. So we're going to have stand for silent meditation. I was going to read the words of the Universal Peace Prayer, which I got from the Benedictine Sisters after nine eleven. Lead me from death to life, from falsehood to truth. Lead me from despair to hope, from fear to trust. Lead me from hate to love, from war to peace. Let peace fill my heart, my world, my universe. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the Wednesday, January fifth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting and bills for payment on January twenty-first, January twenty-eighth, and February fourth. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Allen. We don't have any presentations, but I believe we have some people in the audience here to speak on. Do we know if the other gentlemen are on?
Am I sound all the way up?
Do you want me to?
Well, we're trying to get the council members, make sure that they can hear us and that we can hear them. Keep in mind that we will pause at eight P. M. for a public hearing on a liquor license transfer.
I also cannot hear them, Frank. Unless they're saying no, then they would.
I can hear you now.
And we can hear you. Did you want me to call people on the phone?
Hey Lori.
Okay, I'm going to put you on.
Okay.
You're live. Okay. So is anyone here for repository? Thank you. You could come up to the mic. Okay. Your Mr. Feaster?
Yes, ma'am.
What property are you here to talk about?
The property directly to the rear of mine located at nine eleven West Seventeenth Street.
Okay, there's some questions at the microphone. Can you answer those questions?
Yes, ma'am. The property is currently vacant. The only thing it has in the back are knot weeds and a bandit couch. My plans for the property is to take all of the knot weeds out, level it out, put the grass there, and then use that to grow fruits and vegetables. It's currently in great condition with the exception of the knot weeds. I live directly in front of it, so you have to get to my property directly, walk onto it in order to get there, or go through the alleyway in the back in order to get to it directly. That's for maintenance, so I'm going to treat it like everything else at our home. Anything that needs to be shoveled gets shoveled, any debris or anything that needs to get picked up gets thrown in the garbage directly from there. And it'll also be fenced off.
Does anybody from council have any other questions?
Do you own property near this?
Yes, ma'am. I actually own the entire front nine eleven West Seventeenth property.
Anyone else from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does someone else? Go ahead, state your name and the property.
My name is Dan Fiori. The property is five twenty-eight East Twenty-Fifth Street. The property is vacant. Currently, my plans are to just use the property as a side yard and also to block off the alleyway as people are continuing to drive through, off the alleyway, through the street on, or through the property onto the street. What condition is the property in? It's just grass and overgrown trees. Do I live near the property? Yes. And for number five, I have a maintenance company that takes care of cutting the grass, and I do snow plowing removal around the area, too.
Anybody on council have any questions? Lori, are there any other questions to ask?
You have property adjacent to this?
I have property across the street and, well, not necessarily adjacent, but two lots down on the same strata street, too.
Okay, so this would be next to your current property?
Correct. Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak on a repository sale?
Good evening. My name is Tanya Howard Festa, and the lot that I am looking at is the Waffle Sub Lot LT six, block one forty by one oh five. The property is adjacent to my property. It's literally right next door. It is, there's no structure on the lot. It is completely flat. Unfortunately, it has been a habitat for wildlife of four legs and two, so I've had a lot of unfortunate issues with break-ins and things like that. So my plans for the property would be to excavate all of the foliage that is overgrown and been uncared for, as well as to cut back the trees that have caused extensive damage to my property, and then also possibly concreting it and putting in a double garage or driveway. Again, the condition of the property is just completely unkept. It's not even grass anymore. It's, it's everything. It's high foliage. And again, I live right next door, and I do have landscapers and a team that cares for my property, so it would not be a burden or any issue for me to continue with care to the adjacent lot. That's actually substantially smaller than what I own already, so it wouldn't be a trouble to care for it and improve the area.
Any questions from council members? Any other questions, Lori? Okay, we're good.
Is there anyone else here for repository?
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else for a repository sale? Last call.
Okay, Madam President, this would take us to the public comments portion of the meeting.
This is rather strange. Can you hear me? My name's Freda Tepper. I live at seventeen thirty-eight West Twenty-Third Street in Erie. So this is Erie, and we just had a big snow. And we've had big snows before, and we have snow every year. The city, businesses, churches, schools, hospitals should have a plan so that they can make the sidewalks accessible. I shovel my walk. People shovel their walks. Businesses, all those entities, including the city, all along the water authority, there's nothing there on, on Twelfth Street. The sidewalk is not open. And the city plows make huge berms. If you go down Brown, you will see berms blocking the crosswalks that are like twelve feet high, and they do it every year. So this isn't like new. This is an every year, every storm thing. Green Garden, none of the businesses plow their sidewalks. None of Twelfth Street, from Sassafras all the way to lord knows where, is open during the winter. I think maybe businesses should be able to demonstrate when they get a permit that they have a plan for snow removal. This is Erie. This is in Miami, and businesses should not be leaving huge berms that block the sidewalk. The one on Ellsworth and Twenty-Six, always. I haven't gone by Teresa's on Green Garden, but I'll bet they've done it again. But there needs to be more of a way. Have you guys seen all the pedestrians walking in the street? Have you had to walk in the street? I bet Jasmine has. I don't know how, how often people get killed walking in the street in Erie in the wintertime. It's a quality of life issue, you know, just like somebody letting their grass grow too long. I think this is a really more serious quality of life issue, and it really should be addressed because it's not just this big storm. It's every year, it's most storms. Also, I'm glad to see that there's going to be money for the Experienced Children's Museum. I just want to point out that since it's R A C P money, that they will have to be paying the state minimum wage, and they will have to be providing paid, paid medical leave, family leave, just like it's, is required. So I hope that, that that's part of the process. And wouldn't it be nice then, since, since the Experienced Children's Museum is getting five million dollars, that they provide reduced rate entrance fee for people of low income? Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Kathleen Schaff. I reside at twenty-four thirty-seven East Forty-Third Street in Erie, and I first of all want to say thank you to Frank Stromella and the city of Erie for providing all of your public meetings online through way of YouTube or Facebook. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but I watched this week or last week, the prehistoric, the preservation meeting that they had for the buildings, and then I watched part of the Planning Commission this week, and I was talking with Curtis Jones coming in, and he said that he does watch the meetings as well. So thank you for all your hard work in getting open, honest communication out there. I want to piggyback on what Freda just mentioned about the Erie Children's Museum. That's wonderful that we're giving them that money. Perhaps they could have like some free days where the public can come. It is eight dollars a person to go into the children's museum, and I know there are families who may not be able to afford that even, but, so that's nice. And the money coming into, on number four, where the city is giving the CARES Plan and the money for the city mission and the refuge and the community shelter services, that's all wonderful. Actually, I'm also here because there's still homeless people outside during the day, and that's a big concern for me. I talked with Sister Mary Miller over the Christmas break briefly, and she mentioned that they're still not able to feed people inside the Emma Soup Kitchen. So people are still taking their bag lunches and just trying to find a place to stay warm. And I was wondering if a place like the Oasis Market that is no longer being used next to Rite Aid, somehow if the powers that be could rent out that building, it's really a big size building inside, and maybe they could have like a warming station or something during the day. I know the upper room has availability, but due to COVID and whatnot, I don't know how many people that they're able to fit in. So during two of the meetings I attended, one was the Eastside Grassroots Coalition on Zoom. They mentioned that there's an opportunity, an interest for the Burton School Building, too, and I thought that was very interesting to have them try to come up with the funding to meet educational needs in that building. So that would be a wonderful repurpose building. And that was also mentioned at the preservation building to, or meeting. Thank you to Mr. Mo Troop for, you must be the liaison for the Human Relations Advisory. I attend, was at my first meeting yesterday, all excited about letting people know that the Human Relations Commission is alive in Erie to get the word out about if you feel like you are discriminated against in housing situations or your work environment, there are people out there that are willing to assist you. How about a snow melting machine? Now, they're very costly. I did some reading on it, and it's like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but this could be of help to what Freda was saying about the large berms. I teach at St. James, and on East Lawn Parkway, there's a huge snow berm. So the kids actually cannot cross the street where they normally do because it's, there's a little plaza across the street from St. James, but now it's just like a big. Are you going to have your meeting now?
No, I just, our, there's one time or whatever, so I think we're almost done here.
Okay.
Thank you for all your wonderful time.
Sure, thank you.
I think we have time probably for one more person, and then we'll be doing public comments after the public hearing, but.
Good evening, Madam President, council. I've grown in the last couple of years, Lori. Madam President, council members, those here in the room. Yes, ma'am. Curtis Jones, Jr., twenty-two oh four Plum Street. It's so weird being on the other side of the table, and I've had to ask people to give their address a hundred times, Mr. Troop. Just want to take a moment to congratulate this current council, new elected officials, breaking new, new boundaries down, you know, kicking in new doors, and congratulations to Madam President with her tenure as council president. Had the privilege of serving with her for some years, a few years ago. Just wanted to just say a few things. One, we know we are living in, you know, this pandemic world as it's been described. One, we know we are living in, you know, this pandemic world as it's been described. Our worlds, our lives have been turned upside down tremendously in the last almost two years. Having had the privilege and the honor, the responsibility, and also oftentimes the difficulty of serving as a city council member and an elected official in this city and for this city, I know a lot of what you're going through. You have to make decisions that are unpopular in many instances, where you try to get as much information as you can on particular topics to make the best decisions you can. But, not "but", with that said, the other side of these last two years and the challenge that has come through COVID is an opportunity to maybe do some things that we've never had the opportunity to do. Because of funding that has been released, because of the significance of the difficulties that COVID has provided for businesses and agencies and organizations and community members, in particular, those that have been disenfranchised, those that are lower socioeconomic areas or arenas in our community. That money's been brought into our city to try to help and to curb some of those issues and some of those challenges. I recognize and honor what the administration, along with council, is doing and will continue to do. Even with the Economic Development Office, you know, applications for loans and grants for businesses and organizations in our city came live and went on live today. People can apply for some of those funds. So, not only... I'll wrap up by saying this. Not only do you have a responsibility respectfully to do what you can, do your fiduciary responsibility, get as much information as you can, but this might be an opportunity to be creative in a way with this council that was never available in the time that I was on council. We had many opportunities to hear great ideas and great projects and hear from great organizations, but always, and most times, didn't have the funds to support them. And so I would just say to you that you may have an opportunity to do some of the things that we would have liked to do, but didn't have the means and the financial wherewithal or ability to do it. So don't just be prudent. Don't just be informed. All those are important. But I challenge you to be creative respectfully as well, and to maybe do some things that we couldn't do historically because those resources weren't there. So this is a great and grand opportunity for you to do that. And I'm able and willing to be a part of whatever I can do, and to do whatever I can do to help you and support you with my community connection, as we all have, but also with my experience in the seat that you currently sit in at your disposal. So, be responsible, be fiduciary, be all that you need to be in your office, but also don't forget creativity, and let's do something that possibly we could not have done before with the resources we've never had. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And that's... It's 7:56 according to my phone. Is it okay to start the public hearing now, or should I have one more person comment? Is it better to start the public hearing? Is it okay to start it early, or is... Would it be better to...
I would start it on time.
On time?
Later, rather than early.
Okay. So we will have time for one more public comment before we go to the public hearing.
Okay, I'll be quick.
Thank you.
My name is Chief Tecumseh Brown-Eagle, Erie, Pennsylvania, representing the Erie Indian Mound Builders Tribal Nation. My address is 700 State Street in the big building over there. At first, I wasn't going to speak. Let me give you my background real quick here. I have two degrees from Gannon University, accounting and economics, specializing in money and banking. And my sister, who actually dropped out of her sophomore year, ended up working for the Federal Reserve Bank in Washington, DC. I bring 50 years of tax preparation, economic development globally, and I'm back here in Erie, Pennsylvania. I looked over that five-year comprehensive plan, and it's not really a good plan at this time, and it needs to be modified because of the COVID situation. Okay? So you may want to look at that. Another thing is, there's a lot of money that can come in to Erie, Pennsylvania. We're working on that on the outside. But there's a stipulation. The history of Erie, you know, being really bad for minorities and the level of poverty for the Erie residents, the United Nations is already looking into that, literally Erie, Pennsylvania, okay, for the disparity. My situation, that I came from 700 block of East 19th Street, right from the hood, to the U.S. Karate Team, traveled around the world, played university football, quarterbacked in free safety for Gannon University, we have plans. We have plans that can help the city, all right? Not just with diversity, but with some economic development. I have developers out of major cities that want to come in here and bring some money and do some economic development, particularly dealing with poor and the minority community. So, I'd like to sit down and talk with some of you, show you the plans, and see if we can implement some of this. Oh, yeah, I didn't... I forgot to mention, we don't need your money. We're not asking for any of your money, okay? My group has enough money, all right? So the thing that we're going to work on, we're going to talk about, that's very important. The last thing, to keep Erie out of inbound, there's an executive order that was signed by President Obama dealing with the United Nations and Indigenous people. There's some other documents that... One was in effect since 1957, and the new one went into effect 2007. It's called the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People. Some of the plans and things that Erie has done, they kind of isolated part of the community, literally created a township because of the barrier with the Bayfront. Then you've got Route 5, Route 20, and then you have Bird Drive, okay? So you can't... The people are kind of isolated. Technically, they can ask for their own township, okay? What my plan is, or our plan is, is to bring Erie together, to get some of the training. You have the shooting because the people have too much time on their hands. It's easy to solve that problem. We solved the problem years ago when it was difficult with police. When Officer Burcheck, before and after he got killed, it was a bad time. I was appointed to the Committee for Police and Community Concerns. And you can check with past Chief Bowers, Chuck Bowers. We actually brought the police department up. So I'm not going to hold anyone. You can contact me. Like I said, I literally live across the street. I was an accountant for the city, accountant for the county, and other things. And of course, UN appointments and the like. So I'm here to protect my city on our land. And I can get you the map. Erie is still classified as Indian land, and it's holding together a treaty. That treaty being violated, New York State loses all their land to the Iroquois Nation. So we don't want that to occur. So what we can do is, we can work together to make Erie a better city and bring billions of dollars in. So I just wanted to say that, and you all have a nice day.
Sir, can you give me your name again?
Yes. It's... Hey, Mayor. It's Chief Tecumseh. It's spelled T-E-C-U-M-S-E-H. And my last name is like the color in a bird with a hyphen in between, Brown-Eagle. And we were, you know, like Brown hyphen Eagle, E-A-G-L-E. And it's the Erie Indian Mound Builders Tribal Nation.
Could you give your phone number, too?
Yes. I apologize. I did not. It's area code 814-897-3920. What you all are doing and what you're moving to is very good. It's a great thing. So we don't want to interrupt in that process. We just want to add monies and opportunities in development. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the city, you guys. I represented you all, and you all have represented myself. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Recording in progress.
Now it is time for the public hearing. Lori, you'll be...
I can read the resolution. We're taking testimony for the request to transfer liquor license number R. 19292 from Asian King One Inc., 5901 Westridge Road, Erie, PA to How Nice LLC, Local Eat &amp; Pour, 1201 State Street, Erie, PA. Cecilia, can you swear them in?
So Lori, first we hear from those who are in favor, correct?
Yeah, if you could just...
So if you're in favor of the transfer.
I think they're here representing the...
Good evening. My name is Michael Agresti. I'm an attorney at the Marsh Schaff Law Firm, 300 State Street, Suite 300, Erie, 16507. I'm here representing How Nice LLC, which is owned by James Innis, his wife. This is the former 1201 Restaurant that I'm sure most of you have either dined in or at least driven past on the corner of 12th and State. James goes by JB. JB and his wife took over the business after a partnership that went very well for many years separated. And the individual who moved his restaurant to the Westery Plaza, part of that deal was that he received the liquor license that the two partners formerly owned. So at the current time, Local Eat &amp; Pour is a BYOB establishment, and this license is one of the very few that was available within Erie County. They are in high demand right now. I'm very happy to say that during the tenure for Mr. Innis, when he was the proprietor of 1201 and had a license for approximately 12 years, there were zero infractions, zero citations from the LCB. He's here to answer questions, if you like, but I'm just presenting what he would testify to. In addition to having zero infractions with the LCB, he can recall zero occasions where the police had to come to the 1201 while it was that restaurant. The Local Eat &amp; Pour will be a slightly different type of restaurant, a bit more of craft food, still chef-inspired and chef-cooked. Probably a little bit lower price point, but still a very nice restaurant. But like any restaurant, it requires a liquor license in order to be successful financially. The location of this is on State Street, where there are multiple licensed establishments, both north and south of this location, within a stone's throw. There is no threat to the health, welfare of the public. He has proven himself to be a very good operator of the past license that he was in control of for 12 years, and certainly will continue to do the same if granted this intermunicipality transfer. Again, he's here to answer any questions, but those were the facts I wanted to lay out for you.
Any questions from any council members? Thank you. Is there anybody else who is here to speak at the public hearing? Unless there is anybody else in favor or pro?
Hi, Kathleen Schaff, 2437 East 43rd Street. And I am here to say that I affirm them having their liquor license. Like Mr. Agresti had said, there are many bar establishments and restaurants along State Street. My husband and I have a tradition that when we go out to eat, we try to eat in the downtown area. We're not Summit Township people. We don't go to the mall. We like to dine around town. And it's always nice to go to a place, and I'm always the designated driver. But my husband, he likes to go to a place where they serve liquor, or wine or beer. That's, you know... The responsibility that comes with a liquor license is... It's a big responsibility. And I know people who have had liquor licenses in the past. And it is... You have to follow everything, the Pennsylvania State Liquor License, the board, because you don't want infractions. You don't want to be called... You don't want the police called to your business. So you have to be very careful about serving and whatnot. But I have dined there. My husband actually took me to Eat &amp; Pour, and we had a very nice dining experience. It's a very friendly place and a very unique setting. It's beautiful inside there. So it just gives us one more place that offers fine, nice dining and entertainment in Erie. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay. Those who are opposed to the liquor license transfer can come up to the microphone now.
Hi, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm a former employee of Nusa 1201 and Local Eat &amp; Pour. In fact, I helped to open that business. And I argue that JB is not a good and responsible business owner.
Name and address for...
Sure. It's Andrea Stelmack. I live at 2313 Haybarger Avenue, Erie, PA 16502. And like I was saying, I worked there. Actually, I worked at Nusa, I worked at 1201, and I worked at Local Eat &amp; Pour. And I think the city deserves to make a well-informed and wise decision. And I worked there, and he's not a good and responsible business owner. Right now, currently, there's a case with the Pennsylvania Department of Wage, an hour against Local Eat &amp; Pour because they never paid me. They have a blatant disregard for labor laws, rules, and a liquor license is a huge responsibility. I'm a bartender. I have been for 15 years. It is no joking matter. I take my job incredibly seriously. Working for that employer, I constantly saw him drinking while other people were working, while I was working, on the clock. No one at the establishment currently is Ramp certified, that's Responsible Alcohol Management Program, which, BYOB or not, you need to have your employees Ramp certified to serve liquor, whether the customer brought it in or not. You know, the pandemic really made things hard for a lot of people. I helped JB open the business, Local Eat &amp; Pour, after they had done me dirty twice before. You know, during the pandemic, when I worked at 1201, they had us pooling tips. If you're unfamiliar with the way that works, if I were to get $100 tip from waiting on you and there was four people working, I'd only receive 25 of that dollars. It's really unfair, and it's really illegal unless you agreed upon a work-labor pool at the beginning, and no one did. I really would encourage you to also look into the grant that Local Eat &amp; Pour was given. I don't know how that money was spent, but I heard in conversations that it was squandered and that the updates that they did to the building were minimal, and I'd urge you to look into that. It takes some real big stones to come here tonight. I don't take any joy in doing this. But I feel a personal responsibility because I recruited, hired, and trained a slew of front-of-house employees who also didn't get paid, and they couldn't be here tonight. And they asked me, "We please go. We please go, so it doesn't fall on deaf ears." That there's a lot of us that are getting exploited in the restaurant industry, and I do not want to see another employer get rewarded for their bad behavior. It's a sin to pay people $2.83 an hour and then not pay them. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to make an assumption that you all don't want to litigate a disgruntled employee dispute, so we're not going to respond to any of that. But suffice to say that everything that she said would be disputed. But I understand that's not what we're here for today. If there's no one else opposed to it, if at all possible, we would ask for a vote as soon as you're able to because the pandemic is still going and business is slow. And so, serving-only food is making it difficult for this restaurant. So whatever the earliest opportunity you all have to vote, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
There's nothing to rebut. I understand you made a comment. There's nothing to rebut.
You've made that statement. I understand it. Council's heard it. Council will look into it. Council will not take any action tonight, but unless there's a statement of fact that's offered as testimony, then there would be rebuttal. There has been no statement made of fact after you spoke, so there's nothing to rebut. Your statements and your comments were heard. There are statements and comments were heard. Council will take them under advisement. Council will not take any action tonight. It'll be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting, I would anticipate, maybe the earliest, and council will, at that point, make a vote and make a decision.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak, though, on this, at the public hearing? Deb, we're done, then? How do we end the public hearing?
Well, with that, we would close the public hearing. Testimony's concluded, and the council would take it under advisement. It would be placed on the next agenda at council's discretion. The earliest would be the next council meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we'll resume public comments. Are there any other public comments? Is there anybody online, Frank, who's waiting to speak? You're going to bring him in? Does he appear to just be watching and not... Okay. So last call for, what's his name? Philip Thomas? Okay. Is there anybody else in council chambers who wants to comment during the public comment period? If not, we're going to move on to ordinances for final passage. We have nothing under there today, and then ordinances for first reading, which our city clerk will go through.
Council File Number 16261, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $393,434 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof... Ooh, I'm reading 261, sorry. In the risk management fund, this amount equals the insurance reimbursements from the previous year's claims. Note that I'm reading number two.
We're going to go back and do one after we do two, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
This is sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance number 16261, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16261 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16260, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police, fire, and winter maintenance equipment. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance number 16260, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16260 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Madam President, this takes us to new business.
At this time, we sometimes move to the balance of the agenda, and I think a number of these should probably be broken out and voted on separately. So I'm going to move, I'm going to move the balance of the agenda, if anybody wants to second that, and then we'll take separations.
I'll second that.
Any separations?
I think we should separate number one, and number three. Other separations on here?
Number four.
Anything else from our virtual colleagues? Any separations?
I don't have it right in front of me. I have to advise. We're buying the new vehicles.
Number, number, that's under contracts?
Number five under contracts?
I had to close my other phone.
It's number five on contract.
Yes.
Number one, number three, number four under new business, and number five under contracts. Anything else? Lori, we can vote on...
Voting on moving the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. We have a resolution sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that City Council is rescheduling the City Council meeting of Wednesday, February 2nd to Wednesday, February 9th at 9:00 a.m. Discussion?
I separated this because I want to make sure that the, you know, we have, that the public is aware that we're changing the first meeting in February. We're, you know, we have a lot of regulars who attend our meetings, and anybody new who wants to attend, we usually don't move the meetings. The reason we're doing this is so that our newly-elected council members and Councilman Michael Keys can attend a conference for newly-elected officials sponsored by Pennsylvania Municipal League, and that conference, which is outside of State College, is on the same time as when we would normally have our meeting. We know how important it is to have our new council members become familiar with everything from ethics law to right-to-know to the Sunshine Act, and also to make connections with other newly-elected officials. So that's why we're doing this. It's an exception to the rule, but it will be well worth it for our council colleagues and for the public. Any other comments? Any other discussion?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes yea seven nay zero. Going to number three, sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. A resolution sponsored by Councilmember Liz Allen proposed to the city taxpayers for the year 2022 that the city property tax at 2% discount will be satisfied if paid on or before April 30th, 2022. Tax at face amount will be satisfied if paid on or before July 31st, 2022. Tax at 10% penalty will occur if paid on or after August 1st, 2022. We, as a council, realize these are unprecedented times. This will provide small assistance to our taxpaying citizens for the 2022 year and enable them the incentive of paying earlier than later. This resolution comes after much discussion and evaluation. We, as a council, affirm these are difficult times. We do not know what 2022 will bring, but know that as a governing council body, we need to continue to pay the bills of the city and continue to have services for our citizens of Erie. Discussion?
Discussion. I supported this this time. We realized that we should have actually made this decision earlier rather than talking about this week. I would hope that the Finance Committee will take a look at this much sooner than we did for this year and make sure that we are more consistent with the other taxing bodies. But in the interest of the fact that we did this last year, that COVID is still continuing, that we have some other things we need to address with paying tax bills, including the fact that if you pay early, you get a 2% discount, but you pay a 3% convenience fee if you use a credit or debit card. So I think we can get this all cleaned up and tidied up for 2023, but I'd like to keep with the process we had last year, which in turn was different than the process we had in 2020. We haven't had, we spoke to the... Something's stinging. Anyhow, we don't have a long history, but this did not impact us negatively by changing this, but I know some other council members have some concerns. So that was my rationale. So, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, it's not something that I care to argue about or anything, but there's four main taxing bodies that we face. You know, we have federal taxes, state taxes, county taxes, and city, and at this point, no one has continued on with the extensions that we've, that we're now providing this year. While COVID is still a concern and, you know, masks and vaccinations are so significant, the economic issues of COVID were addressed first and foremost by our government, more even than the health concerns. So we right now sit in an economy where wages have increased by more than at any point in the last 20 years. The Dow Jones just hit a record high in this month. We have the second lowest unemployment rate that we've seen in the last 20 years of any January. The economic issues are no longer the concern, and, but I'm certainly not going to be the one that fights too hard against taxpayers getting a little bit more cushion.
Any other discussion? Michael or Jasmine or Deb?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. Yeah, just that the fact that year-over-year, it appears that the delay actually increased our, the rate of, you know, our actual amount that we collected, it seems that it's in good policy to extend it one more year and to actually know that all the taxing bodies have a different due date, and the City of Erie's due date was months ahead of the other ones to begin with. So when you compare it to the taxes in the county that wasn't due till, like, believe, July or August, where ours were due several months before that. So you have to take that into consideration also, that our taxes were due first. Our taxes are the largest part of the tax bill, and so the consideration, I think, goes well in the fact that the people, the citizens, took the extra time and came through and paid their taxes. So I'm hopeful that we can stand on that.
Thank you, anybody?
And I just want to weigh in the same. I'm in support of giving the community a little bit more time. The last two years has been very economically impactful to a lot of people from all circles, so a little bit of extra cushion room doesn't hurt anyone. And like you said, the record shows that it gave them more time to pay, and we were actually more successful this last year with receiving payments.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think we're ready to vote, Lori.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson.
Nay.
No?
Correct, no.
Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes yea six, nays one.
Now we're on to number four, I believe.
Number four, sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute agreements between the City of Erie and the following subrecipients, whereby the city will make available funding being received from the ESG CARES Grant for the purposes of implementing the designated activities as reflected in the amended FY19 ESG CARES Plan. Mercy Center for Women, $15,000. Community of Caring, $86,120. City Mission, $81,116. The Refuge, $9,539.57. And Community Shelter Services, $19,865.16. Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah, I have to separate that out. And I think this money was designated, like, when the CARES money came through, because I remember seeing the different funds, I mean, maybe it was a year and a half ago, two years ago. I haven't been able to get any information from anyone as to how these numbers were determined. I even asked the organizations that are receiving the money, and one of the executive directors was very unclear about what our process was to make sure that there was a reasonable, you know, proposal for it. I don't know if it's by rehousing into permanent housing people. I don't know if it's a matter of temporary beds for people. I don't know if it's feeding. I don't know anything about this stuff. And I've sent a number of emails. I've asked a few people. I don't even know who to ask correctly. Part of the learning curve of being two weeks on the job, but I've asked the questions for a couple of years now on this one. So just as a numbers thing, since we're giving numbers of dollars, some of these organizations provide temporary beds, and some of them do rapid rehousing to get people into permanent housing, and some of them do both. And I want to point to The Refuge as an example on this one. I would almost certainly bet, if I was a betting man and you wanted to take the bet, that they're providing more beds to the homeless than any of these other agencies tonight. Like Erie City Mission, for example, they provide beds, but they don't do the rehousing. They actually, they'll contract the GCAC to do the rehousing. So if you're homeless and staying at City Mission, they'll refer you to GCAC. You'll get rapid rehousing. And so I don't know who's getting credit for that rehoused individual. If you are in the Our Neighbor's Place, which is where, I don't know, 50 people are going to be sleeping tonight, and that's led by Erie United Methodist Alliance, they also do the rapid rehousing portion of it. So I don't know what numbers any of this is being done by, but EUMA, for example, they've got the Liberty House for veterans. They've got Our Neighbor's Place, which is temporary housing in the winter. They've got housing for people that have gotten out of the foster care system. The Refuge, as funded here, is the only shelter in the community for families. I don't, I don't know what numbers we measured it by that came out with them getting a tenth of the funding of some of these other organizations, but I can't see it, and nobody's given me any clear explanation. Like it's been read, I seconded the motion, and honestly, I asked all these organizations, I've asked a couple of these organizations, you know, should I, should I try to get to the bottom of these numbers, and they said, "Send us the checks." Next time these checks get cut, I want, I really want to have some idea as to how this is being determined. This isn't somebody, like, hooking up a cousin or something, because I have no clue how this has been done. So that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
I think that with our committee structure that we're setting up so that we have good communication between council members and people in charge of dispersing the funds, that that will be, become clear. I just looked at the memo that we got from Deb Smith, so it says that this is a transfer for the purpose of reprogramming funds. I believe that, you know, all the processes, I know that she and her department do a really good process in doing this, but you're right, we could have had some more information, especially recognizing that there are new people here. So we'll make sure that we get that information, and going forward, we'll build that communication line in there. It really is hard, not only being a new person, but being, I don't know, I guess I'm a veteran council person, understanding a lot of the, how, I don't want to call it the bureaucracy, but how the programming works. So I appreciate your comments, and I don't think there's anything that is bad or... So I appreciate your comments, and I, I don't think there's anything that is bad or, or not up to par on this, but-
One of the most disheartening parts, though, is one of the recipients, when I was talking, having absolutely no clue him, you know, themselves. That, that's really, you know, they don't, they don't know how much money's available, they don't know what they're applying for, they don't know what, that's, and that's, that's the real, you know, I, I would love to see, you know, a formal review for, for these grants and processes, but I'm excited that this money's going to help people in our community, and, I mean, I can't, there's nothing more exciting on this whole docket to fund, in my opinion.
Are there any other comments from council? Discussion?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski-
Yeah, I wanted to weigh in. Just to give a little background, you know, we got the cares funding, you know, like, a year and a half ago, and it had to be used by, programmed and used by a certain date, and that which wasn't used was basically sit back to the city. And so the Deb Smith and her office came up with the recommendations, which I don't know how the numbers pan out, but I had the, I have the same concern that I had, you know, when we gave out the initial dispersments of the money, that if you get an extra $80,000, are you expanding your programming? Are we still going to have homeless people sitting around in the streets in the park during the day? I think if you get an extra $80,000, you should be opening up a day shelter as well in helping to take care of our homeless people in the middle of this winter. That's what I think you should be doing, and that's why people said just send the checks, because it's money that they hadn't, haven't budgeted for, hasn't asked for, and now they are receiving it. And so I am imploring them that if you are getting extra money, explain, expand your platform, reach more people, make less homelessness, make less food scarcity. Do that with the money. And I did not see any of that during the first round of the COVID money going out. And so that's my challenge to these organizations, and let it be part of the public record.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes yea seven nay zero. We have a resolution, it's a contract sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys. The proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Dave Holman Fleet Service, 1925 State, for three 2022 Chevrolet Equinoxes at $24,735 each, for the Department of Public Works at a total amount of $74,205. Discussion?
Michael, Keys, you had separated this.
Yeah, I hate to keep coming on, but I still don't know why we are buying more gasoline fueled vehicles. I really don't. If, we should at least be moving to some type of hybrid model, some type of high fuel efficiency model. We have the exceptions where we have our safety vehicles, which may have special specifications, but a truck for public works can be plugged in at night under City Hall and used every day and get plugged back in at City Hall, and will have zero fuel charges. With the price of fuel going up, and as we see is unpredictable, we should be looking forward to this type of stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes yea six, nays one. I have no other separations, so that would take us to committee reports.
Committee reports. We are going to do this alphabetically, but before we do this, we've just, we have formed some committees, they're a work in progress. I expect that those committees will be up and running by March, but for now, we'll do the traditional committee reports where council members relay what meetings they've been to and any other comments or observations that they have. So we'll start with Mr. Brzezinski, do you have a committee report? Ed?
Nothing today.
Thank you, Ed. Jasmine Flores?
I went to the blighted, yeah, the blighted property committee meeting last week. It was a really quick meeting, there was only one property. I plan on having an in-depth meeting with the gentleman who's in charge, but that's pretty much all I have. It went really quickly, for the most part, which I was kind of surprised, but I look forward to learning more about blighted property and what we can do to make Erie look nicer and cleaner.
Thank you. Anything else, Jasmine? You're good? Okay.
That's everything.
Mr. Keys?
Mr. Keys does not have a report for, at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
I get to go to my first one tomorrow, I'm really excited. So I'll give you an update on water next time I see you.
Mr. Troop?
Madam President, I do not have a report at this time.
Mr. Witherspoon, are you on? Do you have a report?
No report.
No report? And I'm, as council president, I, I do not have a report, but I do thank all my council colleagues for their enthusiasm and willingness to work together this year and to really hit the ground running. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and to help us get as, running as, as smoothly as possible and do some long-range planning. I've talked to the mayor's chief of staff, Renee, about trying to do some type of legislative calendar, so we know what's coming down the road, so we can do some work as a council, but also by committee, so we're prepared when we have, you know, ordinances that aren't just routine, they're going to change a fee structure, or, you know, change how we approach other, other things, including zoning. I went to the Planning Commission meeting yesterday by Zoom, and I know that the Planning Department is working on some land development and developer plans, so that it will be a smooth process, but there'll also be additional communication along the way with, with developers. What are they planning to do? How do they get the, the permits and the, the necessary permissions that they need? So that'll be a good thing when that happens. Now, is Teresa on? Teresa's not on, so, Mr. Solicitor, do you have anything for us today?
No report.
Okay. Mayor Schimber? You're up next.
Thank you. I'll be brief also, I really appreciate council. This is my first meeting with you, I did watch the last one as well, but this is my first one where I'm officially sitting in, and Renee will be with you in the morning meetings, and then I'll be with you in the evening meetings going forward. I, I'm very excited about this pick of a council, I really want to welcome our three new members, Jasmine Flores, Chuck Nelson, and Mo Troop. I look forward to really working with all of you and moving Erie forward. I appreciate a lot of the questions you're asking during the, the council meetings, you don't just kind of accept everything, which I think is good, you're, you know, you're, you want to make sure it makes good sense, and is going to really move things forward for the city and the people of Erie, which is who we all work for. So I, I really appreciate those kind of comments. Chuck, I know Renee sent you an email, kind of, kind of explaining from Deb Smith's perspective how those funds were being used. She's the best one to talk to about that sort of thing, and she does get a lot of detailed information before any final decisions are made. So again, I look forward to working with all of you in the year ahead, and please never hesitate to contact me with any questions or input you have. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Joe. Meeting adjourned.
City Council adjourned at 8:44 p.m. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Ms. Keys, Ms. Nelson, Mr. Witherspoon. Recording stopped.